I hereby call to meeting this, call to order this meeting of the Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. Could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Clarkson?
Here.
Commissioner Brahm?
Here.
Commissioner Kirk?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Chairperson Henigan?
Here. We have a quorum. Before we move on to any of our items of business, I wanted to welcome our new member, Matthew Graham. Welcome to the commission.
Thank you.
And extend congratulations to our new community development director.
Thank you very much.
Yes, congratulations. So, next up is approval of the regular meeting minutes of the July 23rd, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I motion to approve.
Is there a second? Anyone, any changes to the meeting minutes? All right, and could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Clarkson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Commissioner Kirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Chairperson Henigan?
Aye. The motions are approved. Is there anyone present who would like to speak during this time about an item that is not on the agenda? All right, so you know, we can move on to the liaison report.
I do not have a Villatour update for you.
All right, that brings us to our new business, which is a presentation by the American Planning Association's Illinois Chapter on Citizen Planner Training.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to give a brief introduction to our guests and thank them for joining us. This is the, as Chairperson Henigan said, the Illinois Chapter of the American Planning Association offers planning commission training, and I think this is going to be beneficial for us and the members, our guests, joining us from the Village of Brookfield, next door. Jason Berry, Economic and Community Development Director with the Village of Lamont, and Stan Popovich, Director of Community Development with the Village of Downers Grove, will be giving a presentation, answering your questions. Gentlemen?
Thank you, and speaking for Jason, myself, we're happy to be here tonight. It's always nice to share our expertise with folks and citizen planners and to share what we know about planning and how we can help you with American Planning Association, the Illinois Chapter. So Jason, again, is the Village of Lamont, I'm with the Village of Downers Grove, we're both certified planners, that means we've continued our maintenance of our credits with continuing education and practicing throughout our years. So this is what we need to go over tonight is introductions, roles in the process, the planning process, responsibilities of the commission, we'll go over some findings of fact, the fine print, tools of the trade, and then some resources for planning commissioners here, sitting behind me and in front of me here, tonight. So, we're going to go a little bit with some starter questions here, just to get the group and understand, to help Jason and I understand how long folks have been on the commission. I know we have a new member tonight, so first meeting, very exciting. So maybe we'll start over here with Ms. Clarkson, maybe you give us how long you've been on the commission, why did you become a commissioner, and one of your favorite parts of it, and maybe not your least favorite parts, but maybe your favorite parts.
I have been on the commission for just over a year, and I wanted to be a commissioner because I just wanted to be involved somehow in Riverside, and when I met with the village president, he thought this might be a good fit for me, and it has been. So, my favorite part, um, I don't know, I have to say bringing my daughter to a meeting once, she's seven, was really fun, because she just said we talked about houses the whole time, which I thought was charming, and, you know, showing her a little civic engagement earlier. Mostly she got to stay up late, so she thought it was great.
Oh, I'm next. So, I think I've been on the commission four or five years, I know I started right around COVID, my first few meetings were online. Why did I become a commissioner? To get involved, to learn what was happening in my community, to maybe have some sort of a say in the community. My favorite part, having a say somewhat, a lot of guidelines that you have to follow. My least favorite part is sometimes it's hard to, sometimes when you're objective, when you follow the guidelines or the standards, it's not necessarily the outcome that I wish for, that's my least favorite part.
And I've been on the commission for six years now. I became a commissioner because a good friend of mine joined the commission at the same time and said, hey, there's another open seat, why don't you come on? And I, I enjoy it because as a, I've been a professional planner for 25 years, and so it's nice to be on the other side of the process and see things from that perspective.
I think this is my fourth or fifth meeting here, so I'm still relatively new, although I was on a community design commission of park for six years before here. And I originally became a commissioner because I wanted to get more involved in local neighborhoods and what was, what was going on, and felt like I had some, some say in the direction that my community was moving. And I think my favorite part is I like it when people come to the meetings, get to meet people from the community who want to contribute and help, and know how we can help them achieve that.
So, I've been on the commission for about five minutes. So, why did I become a commissioner? I've lived in Riverside for 13 years and, you know, enjoyed all the spoils of being here. I've got children, school-aged children, that, you know, now that they're a lot more independent, I've got a little bit more time, wanted to, wanted to get back, and this was the right fit. I'm trained as a planner, I've got a master's degree in planning, I worked in multifamily development for quite some time, so I've been on the other side of this table quite a bit. So, yeah, it's just the right fit, the right place, right time.
Wonderful, and maybe we could extend our invitation out to our Brookfield friends then, too.
Hi, my name is Lily Popovich, I'm the community development director in Brookfield, I've been there about 18 months, and I thank you very much for inviting us to this, this is very helpful, because this has been a new journey for me in terms of being on the planning and zoning commission on this other side.
I'm Todd Spodum, I've been living in Brookfield about 20-some years, 24 years, been on planning zoning commission for about eight or nine years, I enjoy the interactions with our community members, it's also interesting to see what they do or don't know about, some of what goes on in these meetings, so oftentimes to learn new experience on both sides.
Chris Strick, I began as Brookfield, um, Brooklyn Planning Commission 22 years ago, and then it blended with the Village of Brookfield, so we are, I'm in the hands of the commission now. I first began as a trustee, my community is the village president, I was asked, I thought that I, I was basically, not surprised, but more than willing to accept that, you know, it's been honored just to be asked, and enjoying working with the village board and commission and the residents, our meetings and the honor.
And I'm Jen Hendricks, I started on the zoning commission about 2007, and then in 2020 was elected as trustee to the board, now I'm liaison, and I enjoy it because I love being able to help guide physicality throughout our village.
Thank you all so much for sharing, so I can tell there's a really commitment to the communities that we all serve. I've been with the Village of Downers Grove about 19 years now, about 10 in my role as community development director, so moving up from a planning position to the community development director has been quite, quite a change for me over these years, but it's nice to be presenting fun projects that we have in front of our communities and stuff, and it is interesting to be on both that side of the table and this side of the table. So, we'll go ahead and get started with our sessions here, so we're going to start here, first item, we're going to talk a little bit about the roles in the process. So the role of the commission is really to play an active role in the growth of the community, as you guys have all really mentioned, you know, from being able to see things move forward, to applying standards, and to being focused on the community vision and character, which is really important, and it's great that you volunteer your time to do this. As a planning commission member, you can also note outstanding examples of development, so you can really be somebody in the neighborhood that people can talk to and come up to, and you can say why these things that we're approving have gotten approved, or why they're great for the community as well. So being a cheerleader for these developments. It's really important that, as a commission number, you visit proposals before the meeting as well, and then also visit them after completion. So a lot of things that you might not see on paper may come to fruition, or maybe you had concerns about something at one of the meetings, and now after completion, you can go out and actually see how that's working, and then use that information to better the next development that comes in. You really want to, as a commission member, keep informed of local issues, in terms of anything that's going on locally, a local newspaper, a local media, a local social media as well, and obviously with the end and the community development staff to keep apprised of what's going on, what's happening. And then there's a lot of current tools that the American Planning Association has, that you can get as well, which is the American Planning Association Publications, others podcasts, there's a lot of continuing education online as well. Planetzen is also a free online, I don't know if it's free, but there's a membership to it that you can get on there, and you can see training sessions about different topics, everything from micro-mobility to larger developments and streetscapes, and all sorts of different items on there, so there's a lot of training opportunities for the commission members to take.
Are those your slides printed out right there? Do you have copies for us, too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, the planning commission and planning zone commission members have a lot of responsibilities, and the role of the elected officials are really non-land use regulations responsibilities. They do have final authority on land use matters, but really you guys are the ones that are holding the public hearing and really gathering the facts for the elected officials to make their decision on. So you're the fact-finding body to make your recommendation off of, and to look at facts, and to look at your findings of fact, and then what you believe about the project. And then final authority ultimately lands with the elected officials. They're supposed to be providing policy direction to you through various strategic planning sessions, or through in how they want to see development occur, and then they do appoint the commission as well. The role of the planner and the staff is, you know, is usually in person, and the staff here with Ann, beyond the community development staff, they manage the zoning and zoning process, they meet with a lot of developers that are coming into the community, asking questions, a lot of times what you see might have been the fourth or fifth time that they've asked something about a project site and tried to develop something here. So there's a lot of meetings that go on between community development staff, and homeowners, and businesses, and potential businesses coming into town to try to go through the title process or the permitting process. Staff collects and analyzes information about these potential projects and then presents them to you. They want to really work closely with the commission, we always find that it's a really good commission and staff bond, it's really great to have, because it just makes this whole process smoother, and there's a level of trust between the commission and the staff members. The planning staff will then guide the applicant and let them know which standards they have to meet, and then which, which proposals, which, which drawings have to be submitted, everything that has to be submitted, so they really help the development team propose something. They talk about which codes they might need to waive, request a variance for, or which codes the village or the city does not want to waive or grant a variation for. So there's a lot of guidance on a staff level to get something in front of the board and commission for you guys to review. As a planning member, we're also supposed to educate the public and the citizens about the process of planning, so that's really important, that's why I do this here, is to continue to provide that education out. Planning staff needs to be objective, you did mention, Commissioner Brahm, about standards, right? And we always look at standards, we try to keep everything the same, and look at everything in the same manner, and that's why we do have standards, so that we can look at everything strategically. And then really, it's about explaining the request to the planning and zoning commissions, is explain that, we're not trying to advocate for the, for the plan or for the development, we really want you, as the planning commission members, to understand what the proposal's all about, and why they're requesting certain items. So, the staff is really education folks, they help people take it in, and then we want to educate the planning commission members on what their request is. Working with staff, so it's very important that there's that level of trust with staff, and to call staff with any questions you might have, and we always encourage our board members to call staff before the meeting if there's a question on something, because you might have a question that your fellow commissioner has the same question of, and it's something that staff then, during the meeting, go, can address, and try to address that question in the public. We want to review past cases when they come forward, so that staff has a knowledge of what has come forward in the past, what's been approved. We can suggest changes to hearing procedures when necessary, and then really, it's all about, here, we're having a workshop on technical issues as well, so it's trying to provide you guys with the best opportunity to make good decisions. Typically, we'll have a staff report on the petition that's in front of you, which is very important, it provides an overview, it provides making sure that the notices were properly identified and properly put out in the yards, or in the newspapers, so we want to make sure that that's in there as well. It provides background on zoning of the area, and the surrounding zoning as well, so we all have context about what's going on, not only on subject property, but also on the properties surrounding the subject property. A lot of data on there, can be on there, too, past uses on the property, any past relief that has been granted, if there's been a variation that runs with the land, that was granted 10 years ago, that should be identified as well. It talks about the general concepts of plan, and planning principles of the community in there as well. The biggest thing, and we'll get into this a little more, is the findings of fact, and those are very important, let me hit those, so we make sure that we're following the rules and the standards. The application and the staff report will also include all of the documentation from the applicant as well, it's very important that that information get out, might not include everything, but it includes everything that's pertinent to the case, and then any communications that we might have gotten from other departments, any communication from the neighbors, so that's really important, too, that that communication piece is provided, as long as it's provided to staff in a timely manner. Otherwise, you know, we always encourage people in the public to come and speak for you, it's really important to get them involved in the planning process, too. And then, sometimes it includes a staff recommendation, sometimes it doesn't, I don't know, Anne, do we include a recommendation here?
Yeah.
Okay. So Downers Grove does not, so we wait until public hearing, and then we let the applicant present and make their case to you. So from a staff perspective here, we just provide the facts to you, and want you to make that decision based on the standards that are in front of you. So, that's really important, to understand that, that staff is just presenting the petition, and the applicant is really trying to advocate for their own position that way. And then, as a staff, we always want to provide adequate time for the planning commission members and zoning board members to be able to read the staff report and understand it. And again, I can't stress this enough, if you have any questions, call staff, call Anne, because she's probably happy to explain it to you, and if there's something that you need explained, and sometimes it might be better for the petitioner, and Anne can tell the petitioner, hey, I've got a couple questions on this, make sure you address that, so that you can explain what's going on, because we just want everybody to have a clear understanding of what's going on in the proposals. So, we have planning and zoning commissions, these are the other review boards that we have, typically that we see in different communities, our design review commission, economic development commission, environmental commission, historic preservation commission, and transportation. So, in some name form, usually a lot of these communities have these different commissions, so really, they have different standards, different procedures that they go through to review projects, so these are sort of things that might not be in your purview, depending on exactly what your, what your enabling ordinances say about what you're reviewing and stuff. So a lot of times, somebody, we will have somebody come up and talk to us about a project in the planning and zoning commission, and they're not happy about the economic incentives that the village is proposing to provide. Well, that's really, in Downers Grove, that's not under the planning and zoning commission's purview. So we really, you know, kindly say thank you for your comments, this is not under the purview of planning and zoning commission, when this comes up at the village council, that will be your time to speak of that. We have people in Downers Grove that will come up and talk to us about the historic nature of this older building, and a lot of times we'll say, well, that is, it is an older building, it is not landmarked in the Village of Downers Grove, so if you wanted a landmark, there's a process to go through that. So it's very important to try to make sure that you know what this board is supposed to be focusing on, and that you keep your focus on that, and not get into these other matters to muddy waters. Other key actors that come in are the attorney, the legal counsel, so Village of Downers Grove does not have a staff attorney that comes to our planning and zoning commission meetings, so anything that comes up for us that we think might be a legal issue, we talk to our attorneys beforehand, it usually comes down to a majority of the quorum, and how many people we have to have, and it's stuff like that that we talk to our attorney about. But the attorney will provide legal guidance on hearing procedures, and they will clarify zoning provisions. So, a lot of times zoning ordinance is such a matter with all these new uses that come up, with different things that people are proposing now that we had no idea about, who were our zoning ordinance 10 years ago, we'll talk to our legal team to define certain, certain things, and we'll, as a staff, look to our attorneys to say, to talk about interpreting language in the code, so we have a good base understanding if we have questions about certain things. I think the biggest key actor is the public. So, we want to be courteous to everybody, I know a lot of times at some of these meetings you can be very heated if something is going in that people don't like, and that can get very heated in a very quick manner, especially if somebody comes up with a very fiery first pounding of the podium here and stuff. So, but it is important that you listen, be courteous to everyone, and give everybody that opportunity to speak. Many times we'll have, we'll see our planning and zoning commission, if there's a big audience and a lot of people are coming up, the chairperson may just ask, does every, how many people agree with this last speaker? You know, if you have something different to say, please come up and say it, but if we're going to repeat the same things, we'll take account, we'll make note of that. So, to try to move meetings along, so everybody's time is very important to them. And then, with, if public members are asking questions, you know, if you, if you want to take notes, make sure that the applicant that addresses those questions, that's one way to do it, usually good applicants will be writing notes down about the questions that they have to answer, and when they come back up for their final speech, they will be able to answer those questions. So it's good to take those questions, and remember to ask either a staff, if it's a staff question, or a process affiliate question, or the petitioner to answer those questions. The developer's role is to help implement and build the community's plan, so sometimes the developer's plans don't really align with what the community wants, and that's where we have to fall back on standards. The focus is on certain type of development forms, so a lot of times in mixed-use buildings, you might not get developer that's good with apartments and doing mixed-use, but they might be really good at commercial strip centers, and you'll see different developers come in over different projects. They really need to provide complete information, if they don't have complete information, it's always the commission's purview to continue the case, to ask for more information. It's always best, when you do ask for more information, to make it clear to staff what you're looking for. The hardest thing for me is when the planning and zoning commission continues the case, and I'm not sure what more information they're looking for. So, if it's a traffic study, say we need a better traffic study on XYZ street, we need better elevations here, so that staff can go back and work with the development team to try to address those questions or concerns that you might have. And then, as I mentioned earlier, they're usually really working with staff in the municipality to resolve any conflicts. At Downers Grove, we don't like to bring something forward where there's a conflict between staff and the developer, it just doesn't, doesn't work very well, and there's always contentious issues. So, we'd rather have a proposal that is pretty good, and pretty well-vetted, and understand what they're going for, that has some sort of staff support behind the scenes, and then obviously conform to the requirements of the applicable. From a, from a developer's perspective, you know, we all know time is money, and things are very expensive these days, so they are looking, you know, they want some sort of understanding of what you're looking for, that's why they look to your plan, your strategic plans, to see what the community is looking for. They can spend a lot of money on plans, and engineering, and architecture plans, just to be told no, so they do have a performant that they do have to meet, so we have to keep that in mind as a staff when we're working with people, is if they're proposing a 75-story development right in the middle downtown, thanks but no thanks, right away, right from staff, that's not going to happen. So, they try to talk to the municipality early, they always ask questions about it, what we've done in the past, what the planning and zoning commissions have recommended for approval, what the city councils recommended for approval, and approved. Each town has different rules, right? So when they go into Riverside, or Brookfield, or Downers, or Lamont, everybody's got slightly different rules, so they're trying to learn as much as they can, as quickly as they can to be able to place their product in, and then there might be certain things, too, that the village would like, like, we only like yellow brick, we only like red brick if you're coming in, you know, some of those things like that, we like this type of development, so they want to learn as much as they can early on in the process. I think one of the interesting things is, as staff changes and commissions change, not everybody can explain why the rules are what they are, right? Or why we thought that a setback of this was good at the time, so as a staff, we're always trying to provide that information if they have questions. We'll go back through our ordinances and try to understand meeting minutes, and why certain things have been done that way, or we just ask the person that's been here for 40 years if they remember anything, right? What was on that corner or whatnot, so that's really good. And then financing, obviously, is an essential element of the process for them, it's just as essential as zoning approvals that they're coming before you to look for. There's other jurisdictions as well, so these are just some of the common ones, school districts, and libraries, park districts, so on water conservation, state agencies, and federal agencies as well. So a lot of the state and federal agencies, we get in, you know, on Agden Avenue, or any state right-ofways, if it has access, that's something that they have to work through to IDOT to get some sort of approval. Downers Grove, we require them to have some sort of conceptual approval from those transportation agencies, so we know we're approving a plan with a curb cut here, that the state's not going to come back in a couple of months and say it's got to move to the other side, and the whole site plan's got to be flipped. So, you know, that's what we try to do, try to work with all of these other jurisdictions, a lot of these come up when it comes into permitting. School districts are also really important when it comes to tip deal, or any other financing that might affect the school districts as well. And then there's the regional planning commissions, so we have the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, which is CMAP for short, they're a regional planning commission and planning agency. So these guys make recommendations on lane uses, and create larger plans, I think it's the Chicago Go to 2040 or Go to 2050 Now, a plan that they have created in the recent past as well. And then, here's a little fun fact, Hartford, Connecticut, became the first city in the US to, with an official permanent city planning commission in 1907, so we're 118 years on now, if my math is right, so it's very exciting that way. And then, a little plug here, too, if commission members want to become an EPA member, there's an opportunity for you to do that, again, a lot of great educational opportunities that you can learn from. So, with the top five things, as commissioners, you have a very important role in the community, oh, it's an official type of different role, the policymakers, staff explains requests, applicants advocate for their requests, listen to the public and be courteous to them, obviously, and then developer wants financial success, but wants to be supported by the board and by the city. I'm happy to answer any questions on this first section of the training. Okay, we'll have Jason come up, and he's going to talk about the next section.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate the opportunity to be here, I'm going to make sure this is down. Nope, that's up. Stan already covered a lot of this next section, but, you know, it's so important because you are planning commissioners, we're going to go in a little bit more detail, and a bit about myself, I'm in your shoes, too. Like your chair, I serve on the planning commission of my community, as you heard, I work for the Village of Lamont, but I live in the city of Blue Island, so I give up a, the day after our planning commission meeting in Lamont is our planning commission meeting in, in Blue Island, so Wednesday, Thursday night, on the first week of every month, you can find me in a planning commission role of some sort. Commissioner responsibilities, just to go over them in a little bit greater detail, because it's so important for you guys. Stan talked about, a lot about this, but, you know, obviously, understanding your codes, you don't have to be experts, you have your staff to be an expert, and you can rely on your chair, but as you become a more esteemed planning commissioner, I understand, meeting 30 minutes in now, but, you know, you get to learn your codes, and again, I can't stress enough, because me and Stan and Anne and Jennifer spend so much time working on staff reports and the like, that they are important to read, they really are, and that's where you'll get a lot of information. Lamont also doesn't provide a recommendation, I think most municipalities have moved away from having a staff recommendation in paper, in a staff report, generally, I think you could read the tenor of a report and understand where Generally, I think you could read the tenor of a report and understand where a perspective might be, but it's not uncommon that you won't find a recommendation. You know, and again, ask those questions, contact staff, as he said. I, I, I'll just, second and third, what we've heard already today, that how important that is to have that information, to be able to provide that information to you before a hearing. You know, I don't, I don't like searching the code on my laptop in the middle of a meeting and then responding 10 minutes later about a question. So, I'm just empowering you to ask lots of questions. Among these, I would say, avoid jargon is the most important one. That's becoming more and more important, plain language, common language. We live in a world of a lot of acronyms. It's sometimes hard not to just slip into that. I know when I write staff reports, I try to always at least say Illinois Department of Transportation once or Metropolitan Water Reclamation District at least once before I start saying IDOT and MWRD. We're so immersed in this, you're here every month, you're hearing from petitioners who are sophisticated most of the time. And, you know, if you have, especially with members of the public are here, we never want to assume that they understand our jargon. It says make all comments on the record. I would also just say, remember all your comments are on the record, right? And so, hot mics are a thing. Be careful and make sure you're commenting on the record. But that also means, you know, don't be whispering among each other and stuff like that. Don't be afraid to talk up. And that be patient, courteous, this is a little room. I've been doing planning commissioner training for a couple of years, so I've gotten to go to a few communities. And these are tight quarters from my perspective. So, I don't know if it ever gets like heated, but, you know, that's a real challenge sometimes with planning commission, right? And so, you know, remain calm and as it says, you are the model of appropriate behavior as ever hard that can be at times. Hearing responsibilities, pretty easy to follow an agenda. That's going to be your Robert rules for the most part. Most communities, most planning commissions do make recommendations with conditions on certain cases to, you know, signal to your elected officials, you know, items that may have come up during the public hearing, items that may have been brought up by staff, discussion with the petitioner and et cetera. Says avoid public debates, again, this is a tight room. I try to make sure when we do planning commission in Lamont that the questions are always made to the chair and to the board. We write them down, we answer them collectively at the end. It's human nature to want to turn around if you're a member of the public and ask a petitioner a question directly. And I understand that, but it's a quick way for a meeting to get out of control as well. So, as best you can, as a commission, make sure that they'll, you know, specifically when, you know, the public is giving that, you know, debate or in that public hearing that is being made to the commission and that you're keeping track of that. We talked about a few times, we're voting based on standards. You know, one of these mentions, keep an open mind. That could be hard to do, as we've already sort of heard. You know, this, planning commission could be sort of a black and white job in ways. We're working with texts that somebody wrote and described as, you know, the zoning codes and et cetera for the community. So, the audience, as it says, might not represent all views in the community. Usually, they don't. And I, I think the other point that's important is discuss with other members only during the heating, hearing, rather. Remember that, again, this is on the record and so you want to make sure those are part of the public comment. We've talked about this already, Stan, we mentioned a couple of things here, but this is just a healthy reminder, we are not a building commission, we are not the code enforcement officer and et cetera. So, you know, depending on the expertise of different commissioners, sometimes they'll lean on their expertise and their professional field and maybe veer off course from time to time. But again, remember, if you're, if you're always just keeping in mind you have standards as a commissioner, you'll always do right. Stan talked about financing, you know, I don't know about incentives or the like in this community, but as I would, I would echo what Stan had said often, the public wants to know something about who's paying for this. Again, other things not reviewed by staff, that's, you know, interior rents, you know, how the business stacks up. Again, it's human nature to probably want to know that, but that's not part of your responsibilities. Thankfully, it's somebody else's. The role of the chair, I'm sure this one is, goes without saying that it's well done. But for the folks that are new, the role of the chair is to control the meeting, set the tone. We've talked a lot about having, you know, directing the public input and the like, working with staff and, you know, helping the planning commission lead to a vote on whatever that item is on the agenda. This is a typical hearing procedure, but, and if you wanted, like, since we have some folks that are new, if you want to be, I don't want to be, just be typical. Do you want to talk a little bit for a second? I'm putting you on the spot about what your hearing procedure is or if, you know, the chair wants to.
Sure, we've been through a couple of public hearings, I think, for everyone with the exception of Commissioner Graham. But typically, we'll, we'll open the public hearing by reading a description of the application, accept the exhibits, and we'll take motions on those. And so we'll have a formal public hearing where staff presents the staff report, the applicant has an opportunity to talk, and the board has an opportunity to ask questions. We'll also have the public make comments during the public hearing. We do formally close the public hearing with a vote and then turn it over to commission discussion and vote.
I would say that's probably right up there. That's pretty typical, I would say that's how most communities do it, but yeah. Thank you. Taking testimony, you know, that is, that, that public hearing part of the public meeting, you know, that we're having. You know, ensure that everyone has a right to speak. I, you know, working as a professional planner, sitting on a planning commission, having heard lots of testimony over my years as a professional planner, you know, I try to approach it with empathy and understanding that, you know, where they're coming from is a good place. They're passionate enough to give up their time to come here and talk about something, whether in support or opposed to it. And again, make sure that they have the room and the right to speak. That being said, as we consider the testimony, we understand not all testimony is relevant to the standards that we're being asked to vote on, you know. Some of it might be those things that we talked about that are off the purview of the planning commission. Those are more appropriate for, you know, a village board to consider or a city council or whatnot. But this is one of the most important parts of any planning commission meeting is taking that testimony and listening. So to summarize again, what, you know, myself and Stan have shared to date so far, we're playing an active role in the process, we're prepared, we're calling Ann, maybe emailing her. That public hearing, we want to avoid the debate. We want, especially I think, a debate between a petitioner and the public, that we want that, they're there to talk to the planning commission. We've already heard about the importance of the standards and the importance of our chair. So that's it for this section. I'm going to turn it back over to Stan unless there's any final questions about your role.
I do, yes, I have a question. Every meeting that we have is an open meeting, right? Like, the public can attend any meeting. The public hearing, hearing is a portion of the meeting if something has been submitted ahead of time that we, and so they know they're coming, right? That's what, that's what makes it a public hearing. But if someone came to a meeting and didn't send anything in advance, that's when the chairperson asks if anyone who's not on the agenda has something.
Yeah.
And if someone did, then you would open it, then it becomes a public hearing?
Not exactly, no, that was just audience participation.
That's just audience participation, okay.
It's part of the record, you know, it'll go on the minutes, so sometimes people want to be on a minute. There's a issue potentially brewing, they heard about, they want to get out in front of it. They might just want to, maybe they think this is where you come, they ask for a parking spot or something. A lot of people don't know what a planning commission does, and so you might have people show up for all sorts of reasons. But yes, yeah, and Stan, this might be later in, in the presentation. No, that's okay, but yeah, these meetings are all open meetings, so even for, even though there's nothing, I shouldn't say nothing on the agenda, you did vote on the minutes. And Stan and I are here, and Brookfield's here, but, you know, an agenda's posted that's public and anybody is welcome into that open meeting to discuss what's on the record or on the agenda or otherwise. But generally, you, if people are there to speak to something that's on the agenda, you want them to speak during that agenda item so that it's on the record. So, because you're considering, you know, we'll see there is a special use, a variation, whatever it is, that requires the public hearing, the state statute requires that, and so.
Okay, that's what triggers.
Communities publish them in different ways. Like in Lamont, something goes in, everything goes in the newspaper. And then, you know, typical, it's a sign on the property, letters to the neighbors and et cetera. And so they have a right to speak during that public hearing on that item. And that also goes into the meetings and party hearing. So, that's all sort of part of the testimony. I mean, it, it's legal, you know, and it sounds legalistic, but generally, it probably feels a little bit more casual because it is somebody, you know, having a conversation or, you know, expressing their point or opinion on the development. But after all, that testimony is done and that could take no minutes if nobody shows up or it could take hours, that public hearing is closed. And at that point, it would be inappropriate to, you know, take more testimony. At that point, now, the commission is discussing, right, the, the case, what they heard, how it is relevant to the standards, what they learned from the petitioner, et cetera.
Thank you. The only, my first meetings were the, the only time we've had like really robust public hearings.
Robust, I like that.
So, I didn't know what was going on anyways. So, now I need one because now I, okay, thank you.
Good, 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 yeah. And probably a little bit more of that will come up again, right?
Okay.
I have a question, just something that you just said.
Yeah.
When there is a public hearing and we close the public hearing for the commissioners to discuss the testimony that we heard, what if during our discussion, there are questions that we want to ask? Do we reopen when we just ask the questions or there's, which is I think what we've done in the past? But that's okay, right?
We have reopened the public hearing in the past. We're not quite as hard and fast about, you know, closing the public hearing and having no additional comments. We generally think do a good job of asking most of those questions, but we'll allow folks to ask additional questions and for the applicant to provide additional testimony after the public hearing is officially closed.
On rare occasion, we reopen.
You have reopened, yeah.
For the public and for the candidate.
Yeah.
And close it again when we see that there's a lot more that some other public has come up with. Other hearing who are just going by the petitioner or by the staff. Certainly, everybody who speaks in the testimony is sworn in.
That's a good point, yes.
Is that a requirement by the state?
I don't know if it's a requirement, yes, Stan, as you said.
In Downers, the chair will just usually ask anybody at the very beginning of the meeting, even before we open up the public hearings, for anybody who wishes to speak on any topic of the evening to, you know, raise your right hand and attest to the, attest that you'll be telling the truth.
Stan, I can't remember, am I still going?
I think you switched up, so I think it was my turn.
All right.
I think one of the other key points on, on one of the previous slides was about the number of people in the audience. That should not sway your decision if there's 100 people against something and only one person for something. I think that's a hard thing to do because these are your neighbors that are coming out. You probably see them in the park, walking, the kids at school, at the restaurant for dinner or whatever. So I think that's the hard part for anybody serving on a board and commission is something that impacts your neighbors. So, and why that's important is we keep, Jason and I keep pounding on these findings of fact. It's very important, there's standards for everything that they're going to be requesting from you and findings and the facts that you're looking for, it's the basis to ensure a fair decision. So, it's not based on, if I can get 20 people out and you can only get three people out, it's not a popularity contest. We always look for findings of fact and those standards, whether they be special use standards, variation standards, planning and development standards. The evidence must show that the standards are met. So I, the petitioners should provide either written or verbal testimony on how they meet the standards. And that's what you need to be looking at and review those in those staff reports and those attachments on how that does. And it's really important, the legal team always wants the planning and zoning commission members to state on the record if they don't believe a standard's been met, which standard hasn't been met or which standards have been met. And it's as simple as saying, you know, as commissioner, I believe all the standards have been met as documented in the staff report. So it's important to have that on the record. It just helps the village council and city council understand what you guys are finding and what you believe has been met. And then setting a precedent, and I guess, if there's any attorneys in the room, that is essential if there's litigation. So that's what the attorneys will want to see on your record is what you believe the findings of facts have met or if they have not been met and why. And then setting a precedent, so each proposal needs to be considered on its own merits and the record is clear for any reason in the decision that you're making. Findings of fact, so we go back to the LaSalle standards. These are the LaSalle factors that everybody in a planning background is well aware of here. So, these talks about zoning is constitutional, it's not arbitrary. Some standard that you have is always about the health, safety and morals and general welfare of the whole community and the public. So that's a big one, so a lot of times, somebody is opposed to something, they'll say, "Well, it's not, it's not affecting my, my welfare will be affected by this property that's right next to me." But as a commission, you need to look at the whole community and how's the welfare for the public and that one. LaSalle factors include the existing zoning and uses of nearby properties, length of time a property's been vacant, that plays into it a lot, decrease in owner's property values. Property values are very hard to make an argument on. People will come up, "This is going to degrade my property values." And it's really hard to provide proof that that will actually happen. So that's one of the hard ones, everybody, we see a lot of people will come up and go, "The drive-through that's right next to me is going to devalue my property." But there's been other drive-throughs down the road potentially that aren't devaluing properties. So we hear a lot of that a lot of times, so we really have to take that into consideration and understand where they're coming from as well. And what the court said, so Euclid versus Ambler, this is the first really big zoning case that took place here in 1926. And they did not, and they voted that the city of Euclid, village of Euclid did not interfere by establishing a zoning ordinance. So this is really the, the case that put zoning on the map. And I don't know as planners if we'll be celebrating this next year at the APA conference or whatnot. I don't know if we have Euclid happy birthday hats or something, but this is what we all tackle with that way. Special, special uses or conditional uses. So, these are special uses that possess a unique characteristic to consider. So in Downers Grove, these are like drive-throughs, right, where there's a little bit of a unique case. The big thing to understand is even though it's a special use or conditional use, the city council, the village councils deem that that use is appropriate in that zoning district. It just takes additional review of that to make sure that they, any harmful, potential harmful effects are taken into account. So if it's a drive-through along Ogden Avenue and it's a, it's a special use, the council has already deemed that that use is appropriate in that zoning classification, but it just needs to take a look at it again to make sure that we're mitigating any issues. So, that's the biggest thing, is mitigate the use of, upon the neighboring properties, any impact on the environment, and consider whether the public need for the particular location of the particular location. So those are the important things to remember. Special uses are permitted, but they require additional review and consideration to make sure that we're taking into account any, any unique characteristics, whether that be a drive-through, whether it be industrial use that might be a special use. So, there's where that comes into play a little bit when you see those coming through to you. Variations are typically granted when carrying out the strict letter of the code. We create a particular hardship for the owner. So variations are pretty, pretty challenging. So variations are pretty challenging, I think, because those are where they have to prove that there's a hardship that is requiring them to do something. So if I want to build a shed and I want it two feet from the property line, but it needs to be five and my land is flat, then there's really nothing that's unique about that piece of land that is making me build this shed two feet from a five-foot, two feet from a property line when it's five feet. Now, if my whole property is a big hill and the only place that's flat is two feet from the property line, maybe that's a unique case. But it's really got to prove a physical or practical hardship to grant a variation. And those analysis pertain to the property, not to the property owner. So variations run with the land. So if you grant that two-foot shed variation, in perpetuity, that person can have a shed two feet away from that property line that way. So it's really important that you look at those standards really hard and make sure that there's a particular hardship upon the property owner. The variation must be in harmony with the purposes and intent of the zoning code. Many ordinances limit variations. In Downers Grove, you cannot get a used variation. So if I want to put a car wash in a residential zoning district, I can't request a variation for that, it's just not permitted. You'd have to go through a text amendment process to allow car washes in a residential zoning district. So used variations are typically not very good zoning to have because they can create a lot of different issues. So remember, when findings of fact refer to the standards in voting, the evidence has got to show that the standards are met. Request, consider requests based on their merits, not on past precedents. The LaSalle factors for zoning, we went over special use, and then variation with practical difficulty or particular hardship. And open it up to any questions at this point. I don't know, Jason, why you didn't have any questions and discussions like what? Talk to Dan about that. Any questions on this?
When we have our meeting, you put the standards on the screen and we work through each individual one. So that's what satisfies that for the record, right? That we... That's what I thought. Thanks.
Questions back there?
We definitely have seen a lot of different creative arguments for hardship when it comes to variation. When is it not a hardship? Does it always have to have to do with the municipality, the visible space, the visible property? Could it be that this property hasn't been developed or it hasn't, has been sitting vacant for 20 years? And that is a hardship?
It could be. I would take a look at your standards to see if that's in your standards about the time that it's been vacant. I know a lot of special use standards, that's one of the standards or PUD standards, sometimes is that. So I would look at your specific standards to see how they grant that that way. Typically, what you don't want to grant is, I don't want to spend the extra money to do X, Y, and Z. I just want to do the cheap way, or the E, the cheaper way, I would say, is what we hear a lot. Or my personal preference is to have it this way and I only want it this way. I don't want to, I don't want to do it another way.
Stan, something that's vacant also, you know, general health and welfare and whatnot are normally in a lot of standards, right?
Yes.
I think, you know, you would want to something like that. A vacant building is not healthy or doing much for the community.
That's correct, yes. Great, thanks.
All right, I'm back here with the fine print. We'll kind of talk about some of the things we've already glossed on a little bit. I know I said, "Don't use jargon," and I don't like to use like legal terms either because nobody really knows what ex parte is. And you sound like an expert when you say you had an ex parte communication, but that means you did something wrong. You do not do that. So that is contact between commissioners and the applicant outside of a public hearing. Again, you want this, to go back to earlier slides, you want this to be testimony and on the record and as part of a hearing. This is really hard to do when you live in a community and you're on these commissions and I'm on my commission because I want to have a say and I want to know what's going on. And I like being the first to know and all the rest. And then the community looks to you as that expert. You know, where I've seen this be a challenge in other communities is when, you know, you get your agenda and you're like, oh, I know so-and-so. I'm going to give them a call, find out what's going on or something like that. I'm not saying any of you do that, but I have known commissioners to do that. And, you know, as much as you should go and see a site, if they come out and say, "I want to tell you why my shed needs to be two feet from my lot line," you could be like, save it for the meeting if you can. It's hard, but you should. You know, you want to keep all that discussion, you know, in the public light, above board in your meeting. So and as it says, avoid contact if possible. But if it's not, and in times it's not, you know, we do ask that you disclose it as part of the meeting. So you could say, "I was doing my due diligence. I went out and I wanted to see Jason's garage and, you know, his wife was walking the dog and we had a conversation and here's what we talked about." That's what would happen if you came to my house for my variation. Ethics are obviously an important part, not just for elected officials and staff, but for all commission members, plan commission and any other commission you have. You know, not just, you know, not only is it the right thing to do is to be ethically minded, but the state statute requires it. And that includes all things such as gifts and political activities and the like. Professional planners have, take ethics training as part of our certified planning. And so that is something that's driven into us. I'm sure it's something that you all take seriously. But of course, if you have questions, ask your staff, ask attorney if you think somebody else is being unethical, because we're not. Feel free to find out more. Conflict of interest always comes up. You know, there's the business, the financial interests, the something what we like to call the appearance of impropriety. A lot of time that is sort of more often the case. You know, these are things, as it says, that would impair your ability to render a good judgment and maybe even question, have the public question, your judgment or your vote, which you never want to have happen. If there is a true conflict of interest, you should recuse yourself, you know. So that means not being in the room, leaving there, not being part of the discussion or part of that public hearing. If there is the appearance of a conflict of interest, perhaps, you should, you can disclose on the record where that appearance is. So what is not a conflict of interest, obviously, voting on these general laws. We're all very civic-minded, voting on an organization of which you are a member. I'm a member of the Lamont Area Historical Society and maybe they need to come to the plan commission for something, you know, that would be, that would be okay. And this one is tricky. This is often that appearance of impropriety or some, but if you're related by blood or marriage, but you have no financial connection, that is not considered a conflict of interest. Stan or Ann, I'll put you on the spot. Have you had any of those kind of situations? Because those are tricky.
We have. We, not with this, with the Village of Riverside, but the last community I worked with. We had, you know, some people who had connections with folks, but they were very good about disclosing that and recuse themselves even when they didn't need to because they did want to avoid the appearance of impropriety, even if there was some actual impropriety.
Yeah.
So similarly, in Downers Grove, years ago, we had a new McDonald's being proposed and someone's spouse worked for McDonald's, not even real estate, just worked in the corporate office. And they just didn't feel comfortable. So they attended the meeting through the previous case and then said goodnight to everybody and then had a nice evening after that. So I think my recommendation is if you don't feel comfortable, and then it's probably better just to be, help plan safe and just to ask Ann as long as he got a quorum to go ahead and take the night off.
Yeah, yeah. So returning to the Open Meetings Act here, you know, I think we understand its purpose is to give public information about this process and make sure that we are all transparent and held accountable to the decisions that are made by our local government. So as we already discussed, all municipal meetings are open meetings, commission meetings, committee meetings, board meetings and the like. Again, what makes the public hearing is kind of reviewed here as well. Public hearing does require a notice. State statute requires that notice to be published at least 15 days before, actually between 30 and 15 days. So you can't publish it 90 days before and hope people forget. You have to go between 30 and 15 days. And then if you did not publish within that period, say you found out the applicant published on day 14, you can't hold that public hearing. You didn't give the public adequate notice to have that meeting, to have that public hearing. You need, the notices are published for every public hearing. So it's not just, you know, if you have three items on the agenda, there'll be three different public hearings published by the municipality and posted by the applicant and the like. A public meeting under the Open Meetings Act requires a two-day or a 48-hour notice. So sometimes this could be tricky for staff where that public notice goes out 15, 16, 17 days before, but your agenda isn't going to be posted to a week before, three days before, legally, two days before your meeting. And so the public is finding out about, wanting to know more about an application and you don't even have your agenda set and the like. You know it's coming, you could say, wait for the agenda and the packet to be posted. But there are different notice requirements between having an open meeting and having a public hearing. We talked about, you know, having a quorum, and this is about Open Meetings Act violations. If, you know, the plan commission or other commissions or village board got together, discussed something that was on public business. If there is a majority of a quorum, that would be considered a public meeting. And if it wasn't posted, it would be an illegal public meeting. So you do have to be careful. And that applies, as it says, to meetings, phone calls, Zoom meetings, email, texting, you know. So be careful when you're, you know, having a conversation, if you're having a conversation about something that'll be on an agenda outside of the public meeting, that you keep in mind. The legal requirements are requirements for the Open Meetings Act. So to review the conflict of interest, again, it's only if there's a financial interest or a business interest. But there is that appearance of impropriety and I would say always act on, be more cautious rather than be more cavalier. Be careful because of the requirements for the Open Meetings Act about discussing public business, either out in the street or among the other. And of course, this is an easy one. You hear this again and again. Any questions, check with staff or a village attorney. I would say contact staff first before you call the village attorney, because they'll start billing. Sorry, attorneys. Okay, any questions on that section?
Oh, sure, I got one.
I love it.
Back on the ethics page on slide 43, it says, "Limits specified gifts and certain political activities." I wonder if you could just say more about what kinds of political activities?
Which one was it? What's that?
Keep going, keep going.
Oh.
Oh, there it is. Back, back. The third bullet from the bottom, "Limits specified gifts and certain political activities."
Stan, have you run across that? I haven't.
I am not running against up into this. I know in Downers Grove, those employees, again, except they get more than like $5 or something. So I know that's where it comes into. So I'm sure, you know, in the winter season, Community Development Department gets a bunch of donations from somebody because they appreciate what we did this summer, you know, for helping them. So we can, we take that in. We've had people bring in cases of wine for us over Christmas and as much as I would like to say thank you and take it in, I appreciate the gift, but I have to give these back to you. So I think that's what it's talking about.
The gifts make more sense. It's the political activities that I actually am wondering about.
So I don't know that I'm running to that at all. I don't, I think it might just be, I don't know if that's specific to planners.
I think there is in the APA Code of Ethics.
There is.
Go ahead, Ann.
They're, in terms of staff political activities, and I assume this would also extend to commissioners, if there were a local campaign related to a specific issue that would come before the commission, if you were involved in a committee for or against an application that came before the commission, that would be a conflict of interest.
And also for local elections, you know, you don't be advocating for any particular candidates in the context of being a commissioner.
I see, like as commissioner, you should...
You are a resident, so that's understandable. You do vote, but yeah, this is just in your role sitting here.
But I'm not endorsing anyone as a commissioner. Okay.
I have a question concerning the Open Meeting Act.
Sure.
I really should sit down and read that whole act because I...
There's some training on the Open Meetings Act if you're interested.
I did, I did have training when I first became a commissioner. And I think my concern was that I, I wanted to err on the side of caution with regard to the Open Meeting Act, so much so that I felt it almost a violation to ask staff questions. I was worried that somehow that was going to be a violation of the Open Meeting Act. And so I guess what I need from you is assurances that that is not.
Ask questions.
Yes. Are there any instances that you can think of that perhaps questions to staff would be a violation of the Open Meeting Act?
Maybe if you CC like all the commissioners, right? So or, you know, I think most staff common practice now is to blind commission, so there's not that accidental reply all. But maybe if you, if there was a chance where you're like, well, I wonder what, you know, the rest of the folks think about this, I'm going to just ask Ann. So that would be inappropriate.
Okay.
But if it's just you emailing staff, that would be fine. Yeah, you've just got to be careful not to include other folks under you.
All right, so then when I send a question, even though I think perhaps everybody else has that same question, I should not send a...
Yeah, then don't forward it to everybody. This is what staff thinks. That's a good follow-up to that, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, you need to keep that communication one way. You know, and anything you learn, you know, bring that to the group at the public hearing. That would be the appropriate time, you know, to share that.
Okay.
But Ann could certainly, you know, if there was a question, say, you know, a commissioner asked this and provide that information to the entire group as long as we're not talking to each other.
That would be, yes, yeah.
And that would not be a violation of the Open Meeting Act?
Right.
Okay. But like, two commissioners can't get together and start talking?
You should not do that.
That's a violation of, okay.
Well, we have seven commissioner members.
We do.
So majority of the quorum would be three, so.
Yeah.
So if two people get together to talk, that's okay. If you get three, then that's not okay.
I think a lot of it doesn't, yeah, like, you know, like the appearance part of...
Technically, I would still advise that, you know, generally...
I've made it a point not to talk to anyone.
I'm so sorry. You can give me a call anytime.
I don't know any of your email addresses.
All right. If that's the last of the questions there and if something pops up that we already covered, you know, just let me or Stan know. We're happy to hop around, but I'll let him take on our tools.
All right, so our tools of the trade that are available here, wrong way. So policy planning, the foundation for implementation, planning, budgeting, comes down to a lot of these things, comprehensive plan, a downtown plan, a specific corridor plan. These are some of the different plans that communities different have. They process fundamentals, all of these apply to planning. So when you see a petition come before you and if you have a specific downtown plan, you can review it against the downtown plan that you're implementing. If there's a watershed plan and something's coming in with a stormwater plan that's changing how water is shed, that's something that you want to look at and make sure you take a look at too, to make sure that's good. Comprehensive plan, Ann was telling me that your original one is the civil comprehensive plan. Many communities have ones that talk about the vision for the future. Others established by the Illinois state statutes. And generally, the plan is an aspirational document. So they're talking about what we want to be, how we want to get there. And then the zoning is really the specific regulations on how we're going to do that. So it's the zoning and those standards and the setbacks and the bulk requirements that really implement the plan. But the plan, again, is just an aspirational document. Typical comprehensive plan topics you'll see is land use. Typical comprehensive plan topics you'll see is land use. You're seeing a lot more sustainability and environmental sustainability in comp plans, public facilities, transportation, a little bit of historic preservation. You're seeing a lot more housing discussion in comprehensive plans now for missing middle housing, economic development, and then like I mentioned, some of the sustainability things are very key. There's usually a future land use plan that's in the comprehensive plan that talks about where we want land uses to go. We want single family here, industrial, and where those areas are identified in the plan. Eighteen ninety-three, World's Fair is the Daniel Burnham City Beautiful Movement. So all the planners all know about Burnham. He's the godfather of planning here and in our very own city of Chicago. And then I do like our making of little plans. They have no magic to stir men's blood and probably themselves will not be realized. So whenever I come up with ideas in staff meetings and people don't like my big ideas, this is the quote I use to try to get people to think my way. But sometimes that works, and sometimes they just laugh at me, and they know this quote is coming out as well. Public participation in planning is very important. I think what we've talked about tonight is there's a public process here before you as well. But there's other opportunities for public participation to take place. We really want to try to educate and inform the public about what the important work that you're doing here to make sure that developers that come in before you are working for the betterment of the community. It helps to have public ownership of plans, to really get that public engagement. You will always have somebody that comes and says, I never knew this was happening, after you've noticed it and put it on banners and flew helicopters around town talking about it. But people will come and talk about it. There are so many different ways to engage residents these days. Print, radio, Facebook, all the social media items. I've probably just dated myself with the Facebook reference. So maybe Instagram's probably a better way to go with the younger folks now. And I probably dated myself on that one, too. But there's no right answer to how to get the community involved. It's really all about working with staff and what they have found best to work in the past. And it's also really good to pull on other communities if we're doing a plan or something to say what's worked in Lamont, what's worked in Downers, what's worked in Brookfield, to take some of those ideas. You really get some interesting ideas. We just completed our comp plan, and one of the ideas we had is we did an ice cream truck in a park to try to get kids to come and, and help us out what their vision for the future was. And that was a really big success to have an ice cream truck. It cost us nine hundred bucks. I was out of town, so I didn't get any ice cream that day. So that was a little disappointing. But it drew, just it drew the kids there. And then we could also talk to the kids about what they like about the town and what they want in the town, bikes, a pool, you know, all the good stuff. But also got mom and dad there and the caretakers there to talk about what they thought too, which is a really great way to do it. Working with the public, we always want to have the public to be involved, to make participation as easy as possible. Try to go out in the community. If you're gathering that input, people like to come out. It's sometimes intimidating people to come into city hall, village hall, and sit here in a meeting room where it seems all very formal. I know you guys are all relaxed. You guys do this. But for somebody coming in, it's hard. So have people go out to where they are. Publicize your meetings on websites, public places, and public hearings like we talked about. This is a great space to have this. It's very welcoming and warm. So I think you just want to create an atmosphere that encourages public participation. Excuse me. Who are your neighbors? So they're everybody that lives in your community, right? So senior citizens, the children that are out there, they're the future of the community. We have disabled folks. We have different ethnic races that we have, all different education levels. We have a lot of folks, you know, we have people come up to these meetings. I've lived here for fifty years. I'm worried about this, or I've lived here two weeks and this is what I'm worried about. So we always want to take that input in from everybody. It makes the community a better place, regardless of whether you live, own, or rent, you know, but it just, and how long you've been here, how long you've not been here. Everybody has something to contribute. These are a couple of people that are not planners but still very influential. Jane Adams with Hull House in the city of Chicago. She's very, very famous for a lot of her work. And then also Rachel Carson, who wrote Silent Spring, which is environmental planning movement. So a lot of very influential people that have helped out the planning profession that might not be planners by trade. Plan implementation, when you get into your strategic plans or comprehensive plan development, those usually have policies in there, a lot of financial policies in there, talking about your CIP projects, capital improvement projects, tax increment financing, special service areas where you can provide some funding for that. Different communities have downtown facade grants or other grants, programs that are very important to implementing your vision for the community. Plans, the Village, just complete, Village of Downers Grove just completed a comprehensive plan. So we're moving into updating our zoning ordinance now to reflect what we want to do in the comp plan. So that's how we do that, once you've got that implemented that way. Any questions on this section of the presentation? Great. Jason, I think you're up next here.
All right. Thanks, Dan.
All right. The next part is really, let's see, really sort of nuts and bolts, probably things. If you've been around long enough, you already know. But, you know, a healthy review of how the many different ways that we regulate development through our zoning codes and the like. So zoning, it's number one, right? It talks about things like those rear yards and side yards, and often that leads to a variation or whatnot. I get asked all the time, why does my fence have to be four feet, or why does my fence has to be six feet? Who decided that? And I say, the community decided that. At some point, the community decided that. So I think that first line of creates predictability and, you know, protects the general good of that community. But zoning does all sorts of things, not just tells you where your side yards and rear yards are, but what, how you can use the land, if it's a residential district and et cetera. And that gets us to all the very many zoning districts that communities will have. These are different in every town, you know, just crossing a municipal border, you'll have different zoning districts, different names. But these are some of the standard ones. And there can be, as it's mentioned here, overlay districts on top of a zoning district. So if you want to say, I was, I worked in a community that had a pedestrian shopping overlay district that would limit office use on the first floor, because they wanted to create foot traffic in their downtown. So it was a generally a commercial district, but they had specific goals for specific parts of the town, and that could be appropriate. More fun facts. We love them. In nineteen sixteen, the first comprehensive zoning resolution happened in New York City. My wife and I go to New York City every summer, and we always visit Olmsted's Central Park. And so it is nice to have a little bit of that here. We should have added him to like the influential folks. I'm embarrassed that we said Burnham and not Olmsted, like First Plant Community.
It's not a priority there.
All right. Well, I apologize, apologize. We recognize his significance and happy to be here. The types of zoning approval, this is sort of, we're wrapping up here. Those permitted uses, though, are the things you'll never see. I'll get a question, why did you let another coffee shop open in downtown Lamont? I didn't have a choice. I mean, I love coffee just as much as everybody. But it's something that's allowed, you know. So those are, in planner speak, we might say by right. They don't need, they'll just go to a building permit or a business license, et cetera. The ones that we'll see are those variations, depending on community, special use or conditional use. Communities use different terms. Plan unit development will come to a zoning board, and that's when we may also, as a reminder, put conditions on that use. They have to be rational, as it said, but they are ultimately listed in the ordinance that approves the use. So, you know, they do become binding in that sense, should your elected officials take your recommendation on those conditions. Plan developments or PUDs, plan unit developments, this is a jargon thing, right? PUD, sometimes called PUDs in public hearings. But they are designed to provide benefit to the developer. It is a form of special use generally, and so there is some flexibility in how the building or site is constructed and et cetera. But in exchange for that flexibility, so maybe you're going a little bit higher than you would otherwise, or, you know, but in exchange you get, you know, better materials or something else out of it. Public park, you know, there could be a variety of public benefits that come from a plan development. Stan mentioned text amendments where you, you know, that's when we change what's allowed in the zoning code, call those text amendments. Those would come to the plant commission to vote on. But those happen from time to time. In Lamont, we probably do three a year. Sometimes it'll, you know, we'll hear a good idea, and we'll think that needs to get in into our code. Often it comes from somebody in the community that says, why can't I do this, or why should I do that? Or we'll see a trend in permits where everybody wants this now, and we just did approve three variations on this in the past year. So that might be a reason to, you know, have that text amendment.
Anne, how many text amendments did we do this year?
This year, I think we did three.
All right. We'll race you to the end of the year. Yeah, that's great. I mean, a stale zoning code isn't going to do you guys any good. It's going to just make your job harder, you know, so that's good. You might also hear about map amendments. That's when you're changing the zoning. So let me say something that was, you know, zone residential and for some reason should be rezoned to commercial or vice versa, that would be changing the map amendment. Your map amendment, you're changing the zoning map. Subdivisions, you live in the best subdivision in Illinois. I'm not just saying that, it is gorgeous. But outside of, you know, an area such as this, that is sort of like where you see infill development, that's where, you know, the land has already been developed and you're sort of redeveloping land. As you get out into the edges of Cook County and into other counties, you'll, that's where everybody knows what a subdivision is. But there are a lot of regulations around them. And there are probably few, if any, unincorporated areas around here, maybe Cook County Forest preserves or a couple of graveyards or something like that, cemeteries. But annexation in other parts of Chicagoland is still very active. The community is still growing. Typically, this is when a municipality, you know, expands its boundaries and a piece of property becomes under the jurisdiction of that local community. So the final reminders, you know, look at all the various planning documents that you have before you. This is sort of the policy that staff and elected officials use to guide our future. The zoning regulations are the things, the nuts and bolts that we work with every day and at every public meeting. And of course, make public participation as easy as possible. There are so many ways to reach out. Stan prefers ice cream. I prefer pizza. So if you have a recommendation for your favorite pizzeria, I will take that at any time. Any questions? This is great. So I think we're about near the end, right? We just want to share some final wrap-up stuff. Again, your resources that are out there, APA, American Planning Association, and then there's APA Illinois Chapter. You can, Jake, can you, anybody sign up for the APA Illinois newsletter?
Anybody.
Anybody. We have another planner friend here observing. So if you go to APA Illinois, Google that, and they have newsletters. I encourage you all to sign up. You'll hear about webinars and events that are coming up. A lot of the information is for professional planners, but you'll get a good sense of what's going on in the planning community, what they're thinking about, and et cetera. So, and there are plant commissioner trainings and the like, conferences in October, the state conference. So I would encourage everybody to sign up to, for those e-newsletters, especially APA Illinois, to stay in touch. Read books. I want to need to update this. Nineteen ninety-three? There's been no planning books since nineteen ninety-three? I have a good one on my table right now. But these are the classics. These are the chestnuts, you know, that everybody that went to school had to read. Again, this doesn't help you because you can't click the link, but there are a bunch of links there. And if you need any more, let us know. We also want to let you know that there are diversity, equity, and inclusiveness resources. It's something the APA takes very seriously. And finally, thank you. Appreciate your time. We got through this in record speed, Stan. We had such a good crowd. Any final thoughts or questions for me or Stan or Ann from Riverside or friends from, I want to congratulate Ann for, well, now being the director, right? Don't repeat that. But also inviting neighbors, like, we're all in it together and thinking regionally is a way to go. So, and I'm glad you guys took her up on the offer. I like Brookfield, too, so.
I just wanted to say thank you. This was really helpful. I appreciate you guys going by and spending all this time going through it.
Appreciate that, Commissioner.
Actually, I have a question.
Yeah.
We're going through a zoning plan update right now. Would you also recommend updating the comprehensive plan, which has gone on seven years since we're updating the zoning code?
Everybody hear the question? Brookfield's updating their zoning code. Would you update your comprehensive plan? I think as staff, that's a lot to take on at once.
No, no, I'm not recommending at once.
Okay. Oh, okay.
We're in the tail end of updating the zoning code. It's about two and a half years ago.
Yeah. How old, and you said the comprehensive plan is seven years old?
Yeah, twenty eighteen.
That doesn't strike me as a particularly old comprehensive plan. But if the zoning is like a major, you know, reflects a real major change in how, say, your downtown is being used, like what sort of housing, mixed use, TOD, transit, I just, it's jargon, transit-oriented development, you know, if that zoning.
Or is it necessarily changing?
accessory dwelling. If there's something really significant in there, it probably would be worth following up with a comprehensive plan. Because you don't want somebody to say your comprehensive plan isn't aligned with this. Why are you doing this when your comprehensive plan says, we shouldn't be doing that, or leaves it out, or.
If you need a comprehensive plan amended, is another way to go?
A little.
So you want to completely rewrite, just do a portion of it based on how the zoning is changing?
Yeah. I like what, I saw what Downers Grove did. I commended Stan on this. So Lamont's comprehensive plan is Lamont twenty thirty. So I'm staring down a deadline here.
Yeah, when you name it with the year, you're really putting a target on it.
So he mentioned like, go to twenty forty, onto twenty fifty. CMAP is good at just adding a decade onto their plans, because there's just, they're so wide-ranging. But, I mean, maybe explain what you guys did in Downers Grove and how you attacked that.
Sure. So we did four plans. The village council, a couple years ago, wanted to do a goal different plan. So we wanted to update our comprehensive plan, which was in, it was twenty seventeen, but we've seen a lot of change. With COVID, a lot of stuff changed. So all our comp plans are a little outdated, and we have accomplished a lot. So we did a comprehensive plan, we talked about mobility. So we did the agic transportation plan at the same time. They were concerned about upriding. Our current upriding is on the street with some barricades and banners, so we then progressed to the streetscape plan, and then sustainability, environmental sustainability plan. So we did all those at one time. There was a lot of engagement over the past twenty, twenty-four months or so. And now we're moving into the zoning ordinance update to, based on what the vision for the community was, and then we're going to put it into actual regulations. I would agree with Jake, though, if you're doing your zoning warrants now, maybe do specific amendments to specific sections of your zoning warrant, comprehensive plan, just to Jason's point, to be aligned, so somebody doesn't point your two documents at you instead of showing you earlier.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, your question.
I have a question regarding the comprehensive plan. That's really a matter for the board, right? The trustees, not, who does the comprehensive plan?
Sure. Sure. There would be a directive of the board of trustees.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that public, is that available to the public?
Sure. Yeah. So the village of Riverside uses the Olmsted General Plan as our future land use plan and comprehensive plan. We're a little unique in terms of, you know, other communities might have a more dynamic environment where things are changing, where they want to address that with a comprehensive plan and trends. So we're a little bit unique, but we have area plans that we have that are all available on our website. And all the studies that are related to things that the village board has ordered are also available on the village website.
Yeah. I think that's appropriate for Riverside. I mean, that makes a lot of sense for this community.
In Downers Grove, we did our process, the village council, and the steering committee, and so they did it. But we held a public hearing about the plan, was held at the planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
So that's where they took a lot. That's where they formally put it into the public record and. record, and even though it had been out, but it was the formal hearings of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, thanks. Hey, we learned a lot. Thanks again for having us Riverside and Brookfield, and Ann for reaching out to APA Illinois, really, really appreciate spending the evening with you guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carry on.
I know, I was like. We've got to go to the gavel or go keep recording.
All right, is there any information that anyone has to share this evening?
The only information I have is our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October twenty-second, and I'll be in touch regarding our agenda for that meeting.
Very good. Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move to adjourn?
There is second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.